All right, I will call the order. Sorry. The July eleventh meeting of the United States of America. In two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I need to make up and I'll get something in my throat. All right, can you give me a motion with a second for the agenda?
I'll motion.
Janice Travis. You got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Do you want to add something to consent? That's another temporarily good license for the Dean Lions at Magnus. So we can like that G1 number there. Do you want to do G1 or do you want to add?
G1's fine.
G1. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Consent agenda, I need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Be a second.
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Scott, any discussion on consent?
I had one question. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to email this to you ahead of time, Zach. Page eighteen, McQueen Emergency Group. We paid five thousand dollars to...
Chief Federson, you don't have to know what McQueen equipment would be. I think that would be either yourself or Marty, but I would guess it would be you with McQueen.
Emergence, or McQueen Emergency would be me, but five thousand, I don't recall.
Balance to be paid invoice, and that gives an invoice number, so it may be something we've already put some money into.
McQueen. McQueen Emergency Group.
They just switched names recently.
Oh, that may, oh, I know what that is. That is related to the vac truck. So, I don't know if Marty wants to tell us or not, so there was a little air on, they were supposed to give us a credit, so they gave us a credit and then they gave us the discounted rate, but then they gave us the credit twice on the invoice, so then we had to owe them five thousand dollars. As they did, the accounting side did something wrong to the sales side of things, so the sales side took five thousand dollars off the price, and then the county took five thousand dollars off the credit, and they realized that when they were going through their books, and they said, hey, you owe us five grand. So that's the cover, it's for the vac truck that we purchased from McQueen.
Yeah, the, the, the initial purchase was two twenty-five for the truck, and they gave us five thousand dollars as an equipment credit. Then they billed us two hundred and twenty for the truck and gave us the five thousand equipment credit as well. So then they rebuild us the two twenty-five for the truck.
Thank you. We almost got away with it, it was close.
That's my only question.
Anybody have anything?
I've got one. On page twenty, there's a charge for magnesium chloride. I'm just curious what we use that for. It's like ten thousand dollars.
Desk control.
Desk, desk control.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all those who favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Consent is approved unanimously. And now we have open forum, limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. State your name and address, no council action will be taken, and items will be referred back to staff. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I will try to be brief. This is regarding what the EDA is working on for the Old Village, it's not on the agenda tonight. However, there was a meeting in the Old Village a week ago, two weeks ago, I forget exactly. Thank you for hosting that. I appreciate seeing your interest in the Old Village. There were some things I wanted to bring up about the map that was presented. It's referred to as a plan. I never refer to those as a plan because in my mind, plans have specific action items, budgets, tools that are implemented. That's just a map, and it's got some flaws. And I wanted to point out the flaws, and I always refer to it as a framework. It's a, it's a framework, not so much a plan. And I'm a little curious as to why that was redone as opposed to the one that we had done fifteen some odd years ago. They're very similar, and I'm curious as to cost, but that's not what I'm here to ask about. What I know about the, the, the framework is that as presented, it doesn't have enough sewage capacity in our contract with Atsego and in the infrastructure and the ground to match what's on the plan, what's on the framework. It doesn't have enough elevated storage of water to sprinkle all of the buildings that would be in there, or even service the buildings that would be in there. And so at the meeting, there were some questions about people who want to develop or concerned about the value of their properties. And my concern with the framework as it was presented is how do we go about allocating the limited resources? Because it doesn't cover what's on the plan, what's in the framework, and so is it first come, first served? And the people who are at the end, if they want to live in their house for twenty years before they sold it for development, and the sewer and water is all been allocated to somebody else, are they just SOL? Something I would like you guys to consider. We also have a Catholic school that's looking at joining the neighborhood. I'm wondering what their impact would be on water and sewer as well. The map is also inadequate in that it doesn't properly reflect the floodplain. It showed buildings on the floodplain that can't be built. There are issues with brownfields in the Old Village. I'm wondering if there's any plan to address that. The, the framework as it was presented does not show any additional parking or stormwater ponding. That's clearly an issue in that, that map. So these are the things I wanted to bring to your attention, and I was hoping that the, the EDA meeting this morning, that the EDA was going to authorize a small area study to engage ailerers and our engineering firm and deal with some of the, the issues that the, the framework was inadequate to. Councilmember Solonic was there, and I think he used the term, that was a map drawn by an engineer who never walked the area, which I think is, is an accurate description of it. By my thoughts, and I've been working on this for, for a number of years, there is a path forward, and the path forward according to my recommendation would be to, to put a moratorium on a development in the Old Village until you've engaged ailerers and went to solve the questions that I just put forward. By my calculations, there's at least four different potential incentives that could be put in place to work with developers, and potentially up to twenty-five million dollars or more in funding that could be worked out through some of these financial tools. None of this was discussed at the EDA this morning, and I was a little concerned about that. Another thing that, that concerned me at the EDA was when I attempted to bring these things up, there was no comments allowed, which is the first time in fourteen years of me being involved in the city that I've ever heard of residents not being able to comment on agenda items. That was, surprised me. That's what I have on that, and I will send this via email to staff and, and the council to have a look at. The other thing I'd like to address briefly is the sale of the property that is in the Old Village. And I did ask the, the EDA some rhetorical questions. I have the, the RFP right in front of me, and it talks about, in the RFP, the, the ways to evaluate the property. It talks about the creation of affordable housing, and it talks about the proposed price of the new home. So I did ask, well, is this supposed to be affordable house, or is it supposed to be an expensive house? And I was not able to get a, get an answer. I'm just wondering, does the council know, is this, uh, plans include affordable housing in the Old Village? Or is that being, you know, directed to the EDA to, to, you know, come up with our city's affordable housing plans? Or, again, I don't expect answers right now, this, these are the questions I have. I do want to make sure that when I made my comments this morning, that I might have come across as being anti-development of this particular property. Nothing's further from the truth. My goal is actually to develop the Old Village. I'm not developing these properties, and I don't intend to develop these properties, but my goal is to make sure that these properties develop at the highest possible aesthetic and value. I live down there. I want to live down there for the next twenty or thirty years, maybe longer if I'm lucky. And so I want to have the, the best possible neighborhood possible. So, again, I don't want to, you know, block development, but I want to make sure that things are going according to some sort of plan. And right now, I really don't see a plan. So, those are my comments. As I said, I'll send these an email. I do expect to hear a response back because these are questions I think are important to get the answers to. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you too.
Anybody else?
Got it.
Anybody online? Amy? Okay. Okay, that will be it for open forum. Staff, council, council updates, Zach?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I don't have any updates for you tonight. I'll let you know that I am going to be out of the office next week. Cannot wait to go on vacation. So I will be out and not have my phone on me. If you need anything, find somebody else.
Are you coming back with a new hairdo?
Amy likely will be the next person to give her a call if you need anything. The hairdo?
Yeah, is it, is it leaving after next?
No.
No, still there?
Still there for another month.
August.
All right.
Some change. We'll see if it makes it past the summer. Thank you very much.
Amy?
I don't have any updates. We are implementing a new cellphone provider coming up while Zach is on vacation, so I, we don't expect any hiccups on being able to contact any one of us, but if we run into any, now you know why.
Changing providers?
Yes. Yep, to save significant amount.
From what?
So we currently have Verizon, and we're switching to T-Mobile.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Mayor, mayor and council, I have a couple of items. One thing I should have mentioned when I was talking about equipment earlier on, we, our skid steer, our old skid steer has got some major repairs to be done to the drivetrain. It's going to cost around twelve thousand dollars to get that repaired. What I'm thinking about doing is bringing a new skid steer into next year's budget and trading this one off against a new skid steer and get the same deal that we did with the last skid steer, where we buy it upfront and then we get a new one every year. We just pay a two thousand dollar lease on that piece of equipment, so every year we get a new piece of equipment. I would like to do this while there's still some value in the existing skid steer, so we can trade it against a new one. I will put some numbers together to that, but at the moment, we're going to have to put in the money to get the repair done. The other thing that I'm looking at is, I'd like to request that we implement our odd-even irrigation ordinance. Our neighbors around us are doing it, people who supply us with water are requesting that we do this to keep in line with their policy. City of Champlin have put it on in Nature's Crossing. City of Maple Grove requesting that we put on an odd-even irrigation ban in the areas that they supply. Currently, we're pumping a lot of water in Dayton. We're averaging about 1.4 million gallons a day, which is pretty significant. Some of the, the combined pump runtimes is anything from twenty-eight hours to twenty-six hours, that's one and two, not running, there'd be one as a lead time and one as a lag time, so one might run for seventeen hours and the other one might run for seven, those kind of things. But we are pumping a lot of water. I think if we can implement the odd-even, that would help us. We're also having to back down well four a little bit because we're sucking a lot of sand with the water, which causes a bit of a problem with the drive shaft, so we've had to back that down to about nine hundred gallons a minute currently, just because it's running for seventeen hours a day. It's just sucking, sucking sand with it.
So you're not talking about those areas, you're talking about citywide?
Yeah. I, I'd struggle with if, you know, if we're putting it on for Maple Grove, we, it seems that we should do it for the whole city.
I don't like them, but...
I know.
To me, we should be, if they want water, we should be selling it, but...
I think the bigger issue, at least from a perspective of maintenance and such, is that pump in that well. We don't have enough redundant source to get it if something were to happen to that well, knock on wood, whatever happens. And Champlin is already running into issues with water themselves, so we are not...
So we have three pumps on that system?
We only have two.
On four?
Well two and well four. Well five is being constructed as we speak.
Oh, that's true.
But it's not up and running yet. And so because of that, we are going to be running into issues possibly, again, knock on wood. I would hate to have it where that well four goes down like it did last year, and we are down to just well two.
When is five up?
It'll be up next year with the water, when the, when the water treatment plant goes in.
Correct.
So do we actually save water when we go odd-even, or do we just balance out the flow?
We get a little bit, it depends on the participation. We do see a decrease in the, the water usage. It's twenty percent, thirty percent decrease in water usage when we've had the odd-even irrigation on in the past.
That's going to be about the four hundred thousand gallons extra that's being pumped right now.
Yeah, if we can save the well four, like I said, once, you know, if we ever done it twice, it wouldn't be such a big deal, but my concern as the administrator of the city is trying to make sure that we have water for everybody, whether they're going to water their yard, or want to take a shower, or drink water, then you have water available. Well four goes down, we are going to be in a world of hurt in this area.
What's the reason why well five is taking so long? That's been about a year and a half since we...
I think there's been no urgency to do that because it's the way it's going to go into the, the water treatment plant, so until we get the water treatment plant done...
Makes more sense, the way...
Yeah.
Got to do what you got to do.
I mean, I'm okay with the end of the day.
Basically.
We don't love it either. Obviously, we held out as long as possible, the overall staff, and tried to do our best. If they want to use it, great, we can sell it to them, but long-term future of everybody's got to be taken at some point, so...
All right.
That's it?
Okay, that's all I have. We're okay to put it?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you got to do what you got to do to make sure that we still have water in the city, so...
Okay, thank you.
As far as the, the skid steer, you said you had to spend the twelve thousand?
Yeah.
Can you trade it in somewhere that doesn't know that it needs to work?
Well, we could until you said that.
We did have that conversation.
Oh, nice, good. We, great minds think alike, you know?
I know, and I, I did do that, and obviously, the people went through the machine and knew there were some issues with it, and so they said, if you do the repairs, then we'll give you this much for it. So we will get the money back, the majority of the money back that we put into repairs if we trade it in.
Yeah, you don't know you're getting a new one either, so...
Yeah, I hear you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Update from fire. The five people that we've put through the process so far are still in the process, so we'll continue to give you an update on that in a couple weeks. And then, just a reminder, if you are interested in attending, tomorrow's the graduation of the Northwest Suburban Fire Academy at Sundance Entertainment at six P.M. tomorrow.
Go update.
Just a couple notes. One on the pavement management plan, there's been occasional questions on the timing of, of that. It is still on schedule per the original proposal. Unfortunately, there's still some time to be had before that is, is worked through. So the system will be set up in, in August with the analysis and coordination with public work staff in September, the preliminary report in October, and then final report in November, so...
Oh, so we're just dragging the bad news out a little bit?
Well, that's always been the plan. So that's always been the schedule. But just to point out, it is still on schedule, so we anticipate that to roll out on that timeframe. And then on a somewhat related note, the intersection inventory and analysis or assessment, that's been discussed a little bit. We do hope to have a proposal together in August for council review on what that would, that effort would be associated with that.
Where are we at on the multiple role construction projects we have around the city? Any updates?
Zanzibar is nearly completed. They were shouldering yesterday, which just means adding the gravel on the side, so I anticipate after that, there might be some touch-up and cleanup, but I expect they would be done maybe even this week.
Is there no striping going on it? Or is there's...
No planned striping for that one. It'll look the same as to the north. And then I guess French Lake Road, the other one going on, just miscellaneous cleanup remains on that one, too. It's essentially all done and open, although it is closed immediately to the north, so there's no through-traffic on there. I walked that site yesterday, just a side note on the Graco. They have everything subcut and ready to go. They're going to start hauling materials in. They're getting, getting moving on the road, so all the utilities are done.
Do we have any idea when the road will connect from the ninety-four interchange up to West French Lake there?
The curb is in, so they do still have paving on there. I shouldn't, the curb has started. They have the mainline curb in, so I anticipate, I haven't talked with their crews to verify this, but I would guess maybe late August is when it is at least paved. I don't know if it would be open by that point. They have a lot of flat work, a lot of concrete work around the roundabout to do, and I, to be honest, I didn't go to that part of the project to see how far that was.
Thank you.
Do you know when the, the final paving code will go on, West French Lake Road?
We intentionally will leave that until as late as we can, so...
Later this year?
Yeah. It'll definitely be done this year and before our contractor is, or our contract is closed out with it. Probably August or September would be my guess, but there's some flexibility in that. Just to risk any scuffing or other marring of the pavement that might be done with cleanup work, we just leave that until the very end if we can.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Scott?
I don't really have, the only question I have, and it reverts back to the engine, twenty-one fire engine deal. Do we, or have you guys talked about any sort of a maintenance program that all of our vehicles should be on?
Councilman Solonic, yes. So EAM will be conducting maintenance. They do our maintenance currently, but there'll be an annual maintenance program. The quote that I received for next year, and we're going to start working on it now, is roughly about a thousand dollars per truck. It's about six thousand dollars.
And are they the current provider of the maintenance that we've had in the past, or haven't we not had maintenance in the past?
We have not had them do maintenance in the past, I mean, annual maintenance. They, we call them to do repairs as needed, but they're qualified per NFPA to conduct those annual safety requirements. They'll also be tagged by certification from the state as well. It's not needed, but it'll get a decal on the truck saying it's certified for roadworthy.
Okay. And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying a regular maintenance would have maybe prevented it. We don't know what caused it, but at any rate...
To clarify, preventative maintenance, whatever, doing filter changes, oil, all that stuff as, as needed, as required.
Just to clarify, we were planning on doing it next year. Are we doing it this year as well?
That was the direction I believe I received two weeks ago, so that's where we're starting in.
Okay, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Good question, Sam.
That's all I got.
Not for me, no. Not at all.
Not for me either, but I did have this, this question for you, Gary. Now, I'm not familiar with the, the NFPA codes that relate to fire departments, apparently as well as some others, but I, I thought about this one, you know, in terms of like emergency generators, and of course, with my background in hospitals, there's, NFPA one-ten is all about how you will care and feed your, your emergency generator engines, right? And I wondered, you know, since fire trucks are essentially, in my mind, kind of a life safety thing, does NFPA dictate maintenance schedules on, on that kind of apparatus as well?
Yeah, I believe it's, I could be wrong on this, because I looked at it when I was looking at maintenance. I believe it's NFPA nineteen-eleven, but I can confirm that. But yeah, they do talk about qualifications of the individuals that need to be working on the apparatus, obviously because it's a life safety piece of equipment, similar to what you're talking about.
Okay. Yeah, I thought there, there would be. They seem to write code about everything else, but, and there too, to that point, I know with the hospitals, we had to be very thoughtful about what... And there, too, to that point, I know with the hospitals, we had to be very thoughtful about what we allowed our people to do in-house versus what we went to the manufacturer for, just from the liability standpoint. And I would guess that some of that same kind of thinking applies to this stuff, too.
And, and it does. And, you know, Marty's crew has been great in doing what they've been able to do over the years for the fire department. It's just a matter of, you know, over time, I mean, I, I don't. The fire department doesn't blame any fault of Sparks or anyone else that's worked on the truck. It's a matter of, Dave done what we've asked them to do. And so now, it's just more of looking at it in a finite manner and making sure that we're meeting N F P A and kind of going in that direction.
Yeah, and that wasn't my intent to, attempt to lay any blame, 'cause I, I just wanna make sure we're doing the right things going forward.
Yep.
That's all.
More for the Marty and the fire chief. So, but beginning this year, we talked about, like, adopt a fire hydrant. And then I know we're talking with Zach, you guys were talking about doing, coupled with help a neighbor. They may need help, like, plowing their own driveway. We're, we're now in July. Winter will hit us quicker than we all want it to. So where are we at on getting this program up and going and, and creating a sign-up sheet, letting people, like, get on this?
We are back at square one with that, pretty much. Teresa was managing that project. So I'm gonna have to pick up the pieces from there and try and get something organized on that over the next couple of months.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. And then I have a question more for, do you wanna answer adopt hydrant? Oh, sure.
Well, yeah, and the adopt a hydrant, you know, working with Marty and that and trying to make sure that that takes place. It's just a matter of putting the program together, and it's based on, to Marty's point, as the one-man band show. It hasn't risen to the priority, if you will, at the moment. But we can definitely work on it without a doubt, try to get something out by fall.
Thank you. And this question I have is for my fellow council members and mayor. So last week, we had somebody come with their, their signs they had picked up. And Zach looked at the, the ordinance, and there's nothing in the ordinance that says that people can't do that. But according to Zach, we can change the ordinance to say that we don't want those signs.
Can't do what? Litter?
Yes.
See, that's what I'm confused about. Why is that not littering?
So I, I, I'm an attorney, so I don't have an answer for you.
So Paul, you had said when they do collect them, they gotta go sit for seven days. Is that simply a courtesy?
Yeah, it's simply a courtesy. I couldn't find it in our ordinance that it's a requirement. It's just a courtesy to the company, sign companies.
And it is in state statute for elections.
Elections totally different. Yep, I get that, but.
So like for elections, and you guys may put out signs, they cost money. So as much as some might think it's litter, they do cost someone money.
Yep. And that's why I'm, so I'm thinking that, I, I don't think we should be having you guys go out and collect signs. What I'm thinking is, is if you go by an intersection and there's fourteen, I won't mention names, but of the same sign there, it seems to me thirteen of them can be sitting in public works.
They don't have to sit in public work, we can just toss them.
Well, I'd be okay with, with keeping them somewhere for seven days. And then when they call the city and say what's going on, and we say, go pick them up and stop doing that, but, I don't know.
Then we have staff bonfires every other month or something.
Well, the problem is, yeah, they're.
Then they're gonna ask us for more help to go pick up signs and we're gonna.
Yeah, that's why I don't think it should be a, it's not something that, I, I don't know. I don't know how to tackle this, but it seems to me that, I mean, it's.
There's nothing that's explicitly, Mayor Council, and there's nothing explicitly says you cannot do these type of signs. But it doesn't say you can do them either, so that's where the gray line comes into play of that. It's kind of up to the discretion of individuals, 'cause it's in public right-of-way, technically public. So you could remove them and or replace them there. But it's not listed anywhere in our sign ordinance that you cannot do that.
But if I were to take.
It is listed in the sign ordinance that you cannot do it. It has to be thirty feet from.
That's, it's the clear view triangle or something, right?
Correct.
Okay. But if I were to take a sign and throw it out my window, right in front of Paul, he can tag me.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm not understanding why this isn't littering.
I don't have an answer for that.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at you.
Because it's not in front of us.
It's not considered littering, because it's placed in public right-of-way and can be removed without cause. We can remove them, 'cause we have a sign ordinance in place.
Okay.
So we can remove them. So you'd be tagged under the side, sign ordinance, not littering.
So the only way to change is to change the ordinance?
That's a trend against it. Clearly, I'm not telling them that's passionate about it. The mayor clearly is, too, and I'm, I'm happy with that. So I just, I hate seeing them around.
I don't mind.
I just don't. If, there are businesses that I have put signs in my front yard, but I put them up near the house, right? Like, that's just, that's how I do it. I wouldn't put it down by the street, so.
I think if we could even just get the repeats down, I, I think that would be a world of greater betterness instead of having.
But then you have the same issue with, how do you separate the fire department signs from some guy's home property? I mean, that's the same thing.
Yeah, we advertise or something like that.
Government, government, it specifies in our ordinance that we can.
Well, why wouldn't it be? Government's okay.
I was gonna say that.
Nonprofits, government.
But, I mean, I, I'd be okay with a sign, maybe even a sign on each corner, not four. And that's what we see is, especially the builders groups, will just pummel the place with signs.
Every intersection, yeah.
Yeah.
With arrows, yep.
I get selling stuff. I get putting a sign out. But it's just the volume of them is just nuts. So I, I don't know if there's anything we can do, but.
Will there be anything that we could address in, like, no, I was thinking, like, in the developer's agreement? But it wouldn't be, 'cause it would be on the seller end, not the developer.
Yeah, it's really. So you could, again, we can't have them in the clear view triangle, which is what Shevanga had mentioned. It's a thirty-foot area between the end of the street and basically thirty feet back either which way.
But that is where they're at.
That's considered the clear view triangle, so they're not allowed at all, period, in there. It's supposed to be an ability for you to be able to see down the roadway. But if they're outside of that area, then again, they're temporary signs, so they're not, again, you can remove them without cause and.
And, and you have a point. It does take a staff person to, or somebody to remove them.
Somebody can go and take them.
Well, and that's.
Is there any internship programs?
That's what I'm saying. I don't know that we need to task people with this, but just if we could do something where, you know, somebody's driving by an intersection, they take three out of the four signs and put them in the trunk and bring them to stay all or bring in part of works or whatever. I don't, I don't. I know it's clunky. The whole thing's clunky, but.
High vis vest. Get a high vis vest, I'll drive around.
Hey, do you have thoughts?
Zach just said we could firm up the ordinance I was talking about.
You could amend the ordinance and say it's been a little period.
It's not, it's no longer a gray area. It's more of a, like, no, you can't kind of thing.
But are we gonna enforce that?
Well, all of our ordinances are that way. So all of our, so someone has to really complain about it for us to enforce it. So it's no different than any other ordinance that we have in the city, in my opinion.
No, no, I just, you could be creating a bigger headache for yourself. If you, if you truly don't want them and you wanna enforce that and not have them, that's one thing. But if we're just saying we're not going to allow them, hoping that people are going to follow the ordinance.
Leave a solicitor's license recommendation. No one gets that, so I hear what you're saying. I understand.
I, I, yeah, and I don't, again, I don't mind people, I mean, you know, fire department does it, the lines do it, we'll put a sign out. We don't put four signs out at every spot. And that's, that's my headache is, is the volume.
Well, then the only way, you, you contact all these realty companies and you just say you get one at each intersection.
Or they drive by and there's only one left.
I was gonna say that. So I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but it would be nice to have some path, some path going forward. And I don't know what that means.
It seems like we could have some better, clearer language in our organization.
I see the perfect, I see, but the perfect solution here, we get the C I P., pay me about seventy, eighty thousand a month, and I'll go pick them up.
All right.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think firmly, yeah.
Scott or firmly language?
Oh, I'm sure, Scott, go right ahead. We paid a beaver trapper how much to take some beavers away?
Fourteen hundred bucks?
For like a couple hours of work, so.
And you can tell we caught them for about two weeks.
Yeah, so I, maybe firmer. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, if you'd like to, yeah, if you'd like to do in the sign ordinance the first time, we can do it again, so.
Give it to E D A. for six months.
Yep, that sounds great.
Oh, it just went from group to group to group.
If, if you'd like to do that, like I said, we can most certainly ask the planning to put some public hearing. What else? It does not, it may have to go through planning commission, but I don't think it does. And then it will have to go back to council, but I can follow up and confirm if that's the direction of council.
I don't think it has to go to planning. I think it's in city code, isn't it?
Yeah, correct.
So I think it's council.
I think it'll just council. We have to have a public hearing slip on it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate the conversation. Go ahead.
Okay, we are on to item H., council business, resolution twenty-five, twenty-two, three.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We have Kelly Gristman here from Three Rivers Park District. If you have any questions on it, but currently in front of you, this action item is to support the purchase to complete our law con process related to the Pineview project when we got the stormwater pond next to the roundabout on Pineview and Hundred and Twenty-Ninth or County Road, or Fernbrook Lane, or whatever you wanna call it.
Whenever.
Thirteen, I think.
Okay.
That way. This, uh, this will be able to fulfill that law con process, from what I understand, from Three Rivers Park District, in that we can.
Wipe the slate.
Wipe our slate clean. Our contribution, which I mentioned in the staff report, is about a hundred and five thousand dollars. Looking for a motion and a second on this one.
Need a motion and a second.
And you came over to pick up the check, right?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion?
I did, uh, did speak to the homeowner. Just curious how that process went and how it felt to them. And they were quite satisfied with the, the entire thing so far, so I was pleased to hear that, that that went well and that they felt like they were being, you know, pricing is fair and that everybody that they had talked to, I guess mostly from Three Rivers City, had much involvement with this. But anyway, I just wanted to make that comment, that the process sounds like it was very satisfactory to the, the current owner.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Item aye. Yep. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Approval of amendment for the First Amendment. So it's kind of a little different language, but we had the First Amendment to the West Mississippi River Regional Trail co-op agreement with Three Rivers Park District. We are looking to amend that, so that is going to adjustment of taking the bridge out of the Elsie Stevens Park Farm Development Phase Two. And so what we're looking to do is just amend that First Amendment to it, basically saying that we're only gonna put the trail in and we're gonna leave the bridge to Three Rivers Park District to do it at a later time. Kelly, again, from Three Rivers Park District is here to answer the questions, if you have any related to this amendment. Otherwise, stand for questions.
Just the south bridge we're talking about?
Just the south.
Just the south.
Just to clarify.
What was the end bid on that or what the change order, do you remember?
Nope, it would have been Marty. Do you remember what the?
The North Bridge.
The South Bridge.
The South Bridge Amendment.
Was it like three hundred?
It was something like, yeah, it turned out, I think the cost went up by two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
It went up that much.
Fifty or something.
We originally had both the bridge and the trail and everything done for roughly three hundred thousand dollars, which is what Three Rivers Park District had originally grade two. And then it ended up being closer to six hundred thousand by the time it was all done.
Yeah, okay.
Or just the south bridge, and so that's what was been removed based on.
And now there's a, like a diving board there. I, I noticed the trail comes right up.
There's a lot of overlook now.
We put two signs up, so we didn't have anybody go down the trail two times over, so.
Yep.
Hopefully that nobody goes.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna stop the trail right at the ravine.
We, we're not gonna undo work that's already been done. But you have stopped the trail right at the ravine, and then Three Rivers Park District will come by in twenty-twenty-five? Okay, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six and finish the bridge when they're doing other bridge work in the area.
And what happens if somebody is riding their bike on that trail and they go down into the ravine and break their neck?
They dump some dirt on either side.
They call nine-one-one, right?
Well, we got, we got signage out there and rocks and stuff. So we got, uh, trail closed, the head sign, and then trail closed after that. And then there's a bunch of rocks, and then there's gonna be some snow fence, so they have to be pretty determined.
They're gonna have to get a run at it.
Yeah, a damn good run. And it's on both sides of, of the ravine, so.
You can take pictures of it for records?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm wondering, because this is gonna be a couple of years this way, if we, I don't know if there's something more aesthetically pleasing. I guess Jersey barriers, barriers probably aren't really either, but, you know, it just, it's effective what's there now, I would hope. But not very, you know, kind of unsightly. I don't know if there's another solution we can have for the next couple of years versus what we've got today.
Do you have any examples? Big dirt pile?
A nice wooden, a nice wooden fence, two four-by-fours and two.
I don't know. West French Lake Road, there's a ditch with a couple of Jersey barriers at the bottom. So I think, you know, that, that will stop you from continuing. I don't think that's the point here. I think it's safety.
The other issue I have with this, and I sent you an email about it, is we have about seventy thousand to do the trail up to where we are. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Three Rivers was gonna pay for the trail, but now they wanna negotiate to sixty-five.
I think the sixty-five, whatever the cost is in there, I haven't looked at the exact figures. Those are the, the actual numbers that have been expended on doing the Three Rivers Park District.
So they're gonna pay the full cost, not?
Of, of their portion of the trail, the blacktop that we put in.
Okay.
There was a roughly five thousand dollar discrepancy that was going back and forth between Three Rivers Park District and Dane. And it's not worth fighting over by any means, because it's related to engineering for the entire portion. So basically, a certain proportion of the property has, all of it has to be engineered. And so technically, we would allocate out how much is their trail, how much is our trail, and hammer out the difference within engineering for a percentage, but it's five thousand dollars in it.
And just pondering, you'd spend more than five thousand.
We're just gonna spend more money. Kelly and I having a conversation, but it's not worth it, and it's not worth it to go back and forth over five grand. So it wasn't made on, on a bad note or anything like that. Again, we had a good agreement with them, so.
Your fellow council members, if I may, I believe the five thousand dollars was attributed to design and engineering costs. And our original agreement with the city was for construction costs only, not for any design and engineering. And so our staff is obligated to fulfill the contract as it's written. And that's why the negotiation went from seventy thousand to sixty-five thousand. So if the intent is to request reimbursement for future work that we're collaborating with, we just wanna make sure we have that in the agreement, so that we are satisfying our board's intent, just like your staff is working on satisfying your intent.
Thank you.
Thanks for clearing it up.
Okay, need a motion and a second?
Almost.
A second? Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
In other words, this, call it a change order.
Five to zero.
It's negative. Reducing the cost.
Okay. Item J.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council. We're looking to approve legal services. Amy and I were able to review those legal services. We received four. R F P.'s back. We reviewed those and decided that the best, us moving forward, would be to go with Campbell Knutson based on their expertise in municipal services. They have a wide range of communities that they serve currently, and their price per hour was well within our budget. So we don't have to increase the budget in order to fulfill a legal service. Other than that, we stand here for questions, if you have any. Otherwise, we did provide all the proposals in the packet as well, so if you're able to review those, you.
Reviding rates.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Good stuff. Stand for questions, otherwise, the next thing we'll have to figure out is exactly dates. If we, if we do approve a new attorney, we will have to figure out the dates of when the actual transition will happen. Because it can't be tomorrow, because there's no way that we'll get all of the information over and so on and so forth.
Would it be normal to transition them as, like, no new work will go to the existing firm? All new work will go to the new firm, and then the new firm just finishes off with already work on? So we don't have to switch hands? Is that not?
I don't think we, do we have any?
Not really like a set process. I would guess that that would be similar process to what we do, except for we wouldn't wanna say, just continue to work on whatever you're working on.
Well, within reason, maybe, but.
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't think we have anything, like, totally wrong against our current turn. There's nothing that we're saying that they're not doing a bad job. It's just more or less typical communities go out every five-ish years to go for R F P. services, and it's not uncommon to switch at any time. Again, we wanna make sure the transition goes smoothly, so it'll probably be a six-month-ish, my guess, full timeline to move over from, now it's now the S A W? No, not S A W. What's the new term? It's no longer R A S W.
S W A.
S W A, there you go. So where's Wolfberger and somebody?
This is my current attorney. Yeah, I didn't, you know, I didn't pick up on that either. We didn't have, ask for any kind of transition plan in their proposals. Maybe that's something to think about for, for the future. But I, I did read the proposals, and I think this is the right choice. The attorney that they're suggesting, I don't know if we have any kind of limits on how many Amys we can have. But impressive resume, and I, and I really liked the land use planning. And also, I was a little concerned by their, their. I really liked the land use planning, and also, I was a little concerned by their size initially, but since she is new to the firm, she's not been assigned a bunch of clients yet, so it sounds like her availability would be good for us.
Correct. We would like to have them more present at council meetings, so it may not be both council meetings, but maybe one council meeting a month.
What will that cost?
The cost is, it's $180 an hour, so a couple hours is...
3, 400 dollars.
3, 4 bucks, maybe 500 for a meeting if they're here. Again, once a month, we have $40,000 allocated for services currently, and that should be plenty more than enough. We average it out to 10 or 12 hours per month or something, and it's plenty enough for us to handle with our workload.
We'll just let everybody else know, we may have to be a little careful with time, because it really is easy to get bogged down in, asking the lawyer, everything, you know, question on the book, everything that pops into your head.
Again, going from one to, from zero to one is gonna be a huge change, so we're not looking to go from zero to, but again, if it's needed, I don't, I think it's gonna be more on an unneeded basis. There has been many times that Amy and I have looked and go, I don't have a legal opinion, so I can't give you a answer, unfortunately.
And it may be that at some point, we, we get a feel for what we, we need somebody here for and what we don't. I know years back, George was here every meeting, and it just seemed like there was a lot of talk, so...
Feeling like they need to add value?
Yeah. Okay, any motion, second?
On motion. Go second.
Any more discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Five to zero. Item K, RFP for recycling.
You were on a roll. So we went out for RFP for recycling, just as we did with legal. We had three responses, we went through them, the lowest bid came in with our current provider, which gives us the least amount of headaches of having a switch in there as well. So that's what we're recommending, is going with the best price, and we know the current service that we're getting.
Will they keep, oh...
The applicant is in the room tonight, if you'd like to speak with him.
And most of the headaches that we had a few months back are all, they're pretty much solved, right?
It, it has been much better.
It's been really quieter.
Yeah, yep, we have a few ongoing things that we're working through, but there's communication.
You're never gonna make everybody happy, no matter what you do, so...
So the schedule pretty much stays the same, then?
Yep, they're proposing that that stays the same. There'll be, so as soon as the, this is awarded, we'll work with the new attorney and their attorney and get an actual contract that we both agree upon.
So I had one, I guess just one, maybe two questions regarding, it looks like we're, we're agreeing on a per household rate.
Correct.
And it looks like about a 4% adder per year going forward for the life of the contract. I was a little bit confused by the language around organics recycling.
So the Hennepin County is changing some of the requirements, so if your population of 10,000 or under, you can have a drop-off site like we have currently. Once you get over that 10,000 population threshold, you're required, or the hauler might be more familiar with this, but the hauler is required to offer it per home and not a drop-off facility. So it's, it's a Hennepin County requirement that we're trying to reach. Hennepin County has a goal of, I'm gonna mess it up, something, zero waste 2025, or reduced by X amount by 2025, and they're implementing requirements to meet their goal.
Okay, and have we officially tipped over the scale on 10,000, not quite yet?
Not officially.
No.
Not as of...
The answer will be no.
We've got a whole question on the organics, if that's...
Yeah, and so my last piece around that is, they've got a rate quoted for what that will be, but is that gonna be required for all residents?
So eventually, when we get to that point, it is, so kind of like when recycling started, it wasn't very popular. The change of how we handle our waste was difficult, and this will be similar. So this will be a per household price, regardless if you choose to participate or not. So, kind of like recycling, you will have a bin provided to you, you'll be asked to participate, you will pay for it regardless if you participate or not.
Okay, so some of that is still to be decided, I think, probably by us, because today we carry the cost of recycling.
Today, we, we carry, yes, correct.
And this could be done that way, or it could be also, you know, put back on the residents.
Let people fend for themselves. I suspect it's gonna be a lot more expensive per house then.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think you can find a $60 per home charge in Champlin right now.
This is their regular recycling, this is the organics per household.
So it would be in addition to, so if we hold the contract and we're in Hennepin County, we don't have an option. The, the city could choose not to hold a recycling contract and go into the open market, and then it would be up to each homeowner to do their own recycling and organic recycling. But our, we're kind of tied, since we have the recycling contract. And in Hennepin County.
All right, but we're not obligated to that today.
Not today, no.
That's, that's what's gonna be...
There's a whole lot of bear bait coming up.
Do we have an ordinance about putting, storing garbage recycling outside the city?
Are you asking me if we have one about where we locate them?
Correct.
On our homes?
Yes. Like, some cities say they can't be in plain sight of the street.
No, I think...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of that. What I'm getting at is, is if you're gonna add compost to everyone's house, and we do have one, and they have to store it in the garage, that becomes an issue, because compost can smell you. So I'm just curious if we have, do we need to worry about the events?
As a city, we do not. I do know that there are some HOAs that have reached out to us that want us to have guidelines, so that they can enforce their guidelines.
Did you, were you ready to play to them?
So we don't currently.
So they can't enforce their guidelines if we don't enforce their guidelines? Is that what I'm hearing?
They want moral support.
Yeah, they wanted the backing of the city, so that they didn't...
Have to be the bad guy?
They want Paul to do more work. Why the cops come over?
Thank you.
Well, we don't have to deal with that portion of it right now. I'll make a motion that we accept the RFP for the recycling.
I'll second.
Okay, I got Scott. Any more discussion on this?
Who decides when we're over 10,000 people?
Yes.
The census.
Okay, so we got 10,000. Okay, good to know. Thank you.
It'd take another seven, six, seven years for us to get there, so... Any more discussion?
At the rate we're going, for sure.
Okay.
All right, let's get to the gem of the night.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Item, that's unanimous, item L.
We're ahead of schedule, Marty, keep us there.
Fade in miserably. Good evening, Mayor and Council. What we're here to do tonight is get approval to go out for a bid on the plans and specs for the Wellhead Treatment Plant for Wellhead, for Wells Forum V. I have Adam here from Black and Beach to answer any specific questions you may have. I'm trying to keep it short and sweet here.
Sounds good.
Will it be under 9 million before this thing gets planned?
Well...
It's not gonna matter.
Well, we, there's a considerable contingency built into the numbers that you have there. We've tried to build in as much as we possibly can foresee on this. That's why we've taken extra time to make sure the plans and specs are as best they possibly can be. But I can't guarantee there's not gonna be any change orders.
So I've got a legitimate question, which is how do we get Black and Beach to move quicker? Because it seems like this is taking a really long time for something. They came and showed 3D models of like nine months ago. So I guess my biggest disappointment is how long this is taking, and the fact that it may, because of the delays we've seen, it may push the timeline out significantly if we don't get this building built by the end of the year. And to me, that'd be unacceptable. So I guess that's my only concern, is I'm frustrated with how long it's taking.
Generally speaking, we have followed the timeline that was in the original proposal. It's only the last few steps that have been problematic, and some of that was through MDH, but we have followed the original timeline pretty close to what was put in the, in the original document. I know it's a long time, but it's a, it's a big project, and we want to make sure that all the moving parts are where they need to be.
Cool.
So we will be on top of it, and I've asked Adam to do a revised timeline for construction, which we should get this week.
So we'll have it done by the spring of next year?
I think it's gonna be a little bit...
Operational.
It's gonna be later in the spring, you know, it's gonna be there.
Just cut everything by a few days, and you'll make up all that time.
Okay. We can add a few extra days in the week as well.
Exactly that, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I think, wasn't it, when we first started this, I thought the fall of this year was the target date. And then, yeah, so, my concern isn't necessarily that we get it online. My concern is, the longer it takes, this number gets bigger.
Well, yeah.
Started at 20,000, 5,000.
Everything's more expensive, so the longer we wait to get this, the more expensive it's gonna get. Like, let's just get moving.
I think that's what we're trying to do here. I think, once we get the bids in, that should be a pretty solid number. A lot of this, it's not quantities, it's actual material stuff, so once you get a price on that, it should be pretty solid.
Okay. I'm guessing these bids will come in similarly. This isn't like a road where you have a lot of variables. It seems like, this is, you need this, you need this, you need this.
Unexpected soil condition.
Didn't they check the soil under the building yet? That was a lot bigger to check.
We did check the soil, we took it from the well drilling.
Okay.
Over, under 10.
Okay, and you're looking for approval to go out?
We don't have, we don't have any choice.
Yep. Need a motion?
I'll second.
Matt, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, say no. All right. And if there are no objections, we'll be adjourned.